Okay, folks, let's get underway. Thank you for coming tonight. Again, all non-voters, if you're not registered to vote in Whitman. You can't hear me? No? Folks, we're going to get started now. If you are not a registered voter in Whitman, you need my permission to be here if you have not gotten that already. Please do. Can't hear? Can't hear. Need more volume. As they say in the commercials. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, folks, tonight, for voting purposes, we may be using these handsets from time to time. And we have a little question up here. You can just test to make sure that your handset's working. If you see the little green light when you push a button, either one for yes or two for no, then you'll know your handset's working and your vote's being counted.
Let me know when you're ready. I didn't do a timer, so...
They're still coming in. Okay, yeah, go ahead now. I can see it, yeah. So 11 percent of the people here tonight are from Ohio, apparently, but otherwise we're okay. All right, so we'll be using these periodically. So at this point, I'd like to call the annual town meeting to order. Constable, may I count to the voters present, please? 369, we have a quorum. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you please remain standing, I'd like to introduce the Reverend Deborah Woodward from All Saints Episcopal Church in Whitman here, who is going to give the invocation.
Same question. Can you hear me? That would be a no. All right, I'll talk in my pulpit voice, okay? Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. I invite you all to bow your heads as we pray together. Creator God, you have made us, in your image, to be people of abundance, generosity, and joy. Our economy thrives, yet our times challenge us, and our relationships one to another are surely tested. And so we ask you, our abiding God, to bless all who gather tonight as leaders of this community. May they bear the privilege of leadership with humility toward one another. May they discern the choices of democracy with wisdom guided by all that is best in our governance. May all gather here with respect for difference, courtesy of manner, confidence for the future, and grateful thanksgiving for the abundance that is ours in this place and time. May God's graciousness abide, that all people might well know and well provide for the bounty and blessings that are theirs in this town of Whitman and in the year to come. We ask for these blessings upon this gathering in the name of a loving God. Amen, and so be it. God bless you all this evening in the work to which you are called.
If you please remain standing for one more second. Sorry to get you up and down here. If we could remain standing for a moment of silence for the following deceased town employees who've passed in the last year. Michael Paul of the Housing Authority, Edith McWilliams of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, Grace Nelson of the Whitman Public Library Trustee, Dave Stefanski, the Public Library, Susan DeRosier, the Solid Waste Management Study Committee, Diane Bryant, the Whitman Public Library Trustee, Elizabeth Hoover of the School District, Phyllis E. Dodrell, an election worker, Rita M. Feeney of the School Committee, Maureen Morse of the Finance Committee, Jean Dembrow of the School District, an election worker, Regis Bowen of the Police Department, Frances Hayes of the Housing Authority, and Wilford Willie Roberts, the Town Hall Custodian. Thank you. And if the tellers would come forward to be sworn in, please.
Want to get them together? No? Who's up close?
We have one gentleman coming downstairs. Mr. Baldwin's coming.
Do you want to have you guys raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear to perform your duties as town evil tellers, lawfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, to help you, God? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. And will the clerk please read the warrant?
Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Plymouth SS, to either the Constable of the Town of Whitman. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Whitman qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Town Hall in said Whitman on Monday, the sixth day of May 2019, at 7:30 p.m., then and there to act upon the following articles, Articles 1 through 49. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof in not less than eight public places in the town, seven days at least before the day of said meeting. Hereof fail naught and make due return the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of holding said meeting. Given under our hands this ninth day of April 2019, Dr. Carl F. Kowalski, Chair; Daniel L. Salvucci, Vice Chair; Brian J. Bazanson, Clerk; Scott J. Lamb, BAC Member; and Randy G. Lamatina, Jr., Member. Warrant attestation. I hereby certify that by virtue of the written warrant, I have posted eight copies of said warrant in various sections of the town, with two copies in each precinct dated April 17, 2019, attested by Constable Christine M. May Stafford.
Thank you. Just to go over a few rules and guidelines governing tonight's town meeting. All voters must be sitting in the designated sections. If you're a non-voter, you may sit up in this section. You may not vote, and you may not speak. All votes tonight, I'd like to do all votes by voice vote if we can. Where I can't tell the outcome of the vote, some votes require a two-thirds majority, for instance, we'll be using these electronic handsets. And when we call for that vote, you'll have 15 seconds to vote, basically. You press number one for yes, number two for no. None of the other buttons on the device work. And you'll have 15 seconds to vote. You can change your vote during that 15-second interval. The last vote that's there, when the 15 seconds expires, that's the vote that will be counted. Okay? We have a motion to use the clickers, which we're going to do. And a second? I'm sorry? For all votes. We have a motion and a second to use the clickers for all votes. Discussion. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of using the clicker for all votes, say aye. Opposed, no? Then that's the majority. We'll use the clicker for all votes, then. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. When we come to Article 2? I'm sorry. Are we okay on that? Okay. When we come to Article 2, which is the budget, what we're going to do is we're going to take a 10-minute recess so that everybody have a chance to look over Article 2. And then I'll ask if there are any questions on the budget line items in 25-line segments. If anyone has a question on a line item, you shout question, and you shout out the number of the line. After we go through all of Article 2, I'll reread the question line items to make sure everyone has had an opportunity to question the ones they want to question. All of the line items that are not questioned will be voted as a package according to the Finance Committee recommendations that appear in your sheet. After we've done that...
Say it a little louder.
We'll try. After that, we will have discussion on each of the question line items. Is that better? Can you hear me? Okay. And then we will vote on each one, okay? Mass General Laws, Articles 1, 2, and 3 of the town bylaws, and Robert's Rule of Order govern the running of this town meetings. All amendments must be in writing and must be signed. If you wish to speak, please follow the following procedure. Raise your hand. Raise it high. It's a crowded room. Be obvious. After being recognized, and you must be recognized, stand and go to the nearest microphone. We have one in the center of the floor here. There's one in the balcony up there, and we have one here at the podium. State your name and your address. Please confine your comments to the question that's on the floor. You may not speak on the same question more than once until everyone who has not been heard has had a chance to speak. We also have a special town meeting that we're doing tonight as well, and what we're going to do is adjourn from the annual town meeting after Article 1, and open the special town meeting, complete the action on that warrant, then adjourn from the special town meeting, and reconvene at the annual town meeting. Thank you for attending. This is important business. It's essential to the function of our town. My goal is to complete all business here tonight, and I ask that you remain for the duration of the meeting. In the event that we cannot finish tonight, I ask that you return tomorrow night. I'd also like to thank the Finance Committee, who's sitting here in front of me. They have put in many hours, working with the town administrator, working with department heads and others, to study each of the articles that pertain to finances and give their thoughtful and considered recommendations on each at this meeting, in what has been a very challenging year. The committee's recommendations on each article are found in the warrant. These people are volunteers. They perform an essential service to the town. Please join me in thanking them for their service. If you are interested in serving on the Finance Committee, you may contact me through the Selectmen's Office or the Clerk's Office. Do we have any questions regarding procedures here tonight?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have the full bylaws, the most recent bylaws, in my office? Yep. Frank Stein.
Michelle McNulty, I'm Town Council, and the question arose whether you could take all votes by the clickers. We have a bylaw that says all votes shall be taken in the first instance by a verbal yes or no, and then only when it's questioned by five voters. So that was my reason for a pause, to see if that had been amended last year when we adopted the clickers.
I remember the bylaw was amended. I can't tell you the specific amendment.
I think that what you did was you voted to use them as a test run. Did you do a bylaw thing?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm sorry for delaying the meeting, but I want to make sure you have a very large audience tonight, and we want to make sure we don't make any missteps from the very beginning. So if you'll just...
Michael's going to get the buffer.
That'll be awesome. Thank you.
In the meantime, Mr. Lyndham, did you have a comment?
Good evening, and thank you all for coming. It's really encouraging to see so many people turning out for a town meeting. That has not been our recent history. So thank you all for being here. This meeting is going to be conducted a little bit differently than we have in the past. The budget you have before you, including Article 2, the annual town meeting warrant, and the special town meeting warrant, represent the total budget for the Town of Whitman. There is an election scheduled on May 18. One of the questions on that ballot is to see if the town will vote to approve a debt exclusion to make payments on the 11 remaining years of the bond that was taken out to build the police station and repair the town hall and fire station. It is a critical part of our planning. When we act on the annual town meeting tonight, we only have sufficient funds to operate through Article 29. At that point, we will be asking town meeting to vote to adjourn to June 17. The purpose in doing that is to determine whether the debt exclusion has been approved, thereby providing us more funds for capital, or in the alternative, to determine what adjustments we have to make to budgets that have already been voted. And again, this is a kind of a three-step process. Once we've completed town meeting, hopefully on June 17, we will then be presenting, over the next several months, a plan, an operating and financial plan, that will include a capitalist and a capital priority that is currently being prepared by the Collins Center at UMass, and an operating budget that will reflect the town's request for additional revenues. All of these things work together. Right now, we have sufficient funds to vote on Article 2 and to vote, again, on those first 29 articles, but we're not done at that point. And I'd just like you to keep in mind that we hope to be returning, well, we will be returning here on June 17 to take whatever appropriate action is necessary. I believe the Chairman of the Finance Committee has a few things he'd like to say as well.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Anderson, 237 Stetson Street. I'd like to present a very brief summary of the activities that the Finance Committee has completed in this budget cycle, and provide an overview of what we are recommending in response to our extremely challenging financial condition here in Whitman. As many here may recall, I stood before this town meeting last year to present the Finance Committee's resolve to address both the acute and chronic fiscal conditions that we face. The road that we took to get here tonight certainly was not straight nor smooth, but I truly believe that if we didn't take this route, we would be less prepared to complete the task that still needs to be done after we adjourn here tonight. This Finance Committee reorganized very early last fall and scheduled meetings with all department heads to initially draft what was referred to as a worst-case scenario budget. We asked each department to prepare an impact statement for the implications of a failed Proposition 2.5 override. The results were eye-opening, but the process brought an unexpected level of anxiety to all departments. In hindsight, we spent a bit too much time on this scenario. But the reality is, we still need the support of the taxpayers to recognize the need for a Proposition 2.5 override this fall. To put us back on track, to avoid using that worst-case budget, cutting additional positions, and reducing the services we have come to expect here in this community. So what you have before you is a completely different budget, one that has been developed with the significant input from all of the stakeholders in this process. The Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Women-Hanson Regional School Committee, and every municipal department. In conclusion, we want town meeting to know that this Finance Committee fully understands the challenges faced by each department. We sincerely request that you carefully consider our recommendations and recognize our shared commitment to the continued success of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, so now we'll get started here with Article 1, to see if the town will bring in their vote for the following town officers. Two Selectmen for three years, one Assessor for three years, two PK-12 Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Committee for three years, two Department of Public Works Commissioners for three years, two Public Library Trustees for three years, one Whitman Housing Authority Member for five years, one Planning Board Member for two years to fill vacancy, one Planning Board Member for one year to fill vacancy, one Board of Health Member for three years, and choose all other necessary officers. The polls for the election of officers will be opened in said town hall at 9 o'clock in the forenoon on said Saturday, the 18th day of May 2019, and kept open until 5 o'clock in the evening, both of which days will constitute the annual meeting, and this call is issued in accordance with the vote of the town passed January 29, 1902. Do I have a motion? Second. Discussion. All in favor? We'll open the voting now, for 15 seconds, then. Press one for yes, two for no. Mr. Lyndham.
I move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to the special town meeting warrant.
We have a motion. We have a second. Discussion. All in favor? Polling is open now.
While Don is doing that, the purpose of this motion is to address the Articles and the Special, and then we will immediately return to the Annual.
We're voting to adjourn to go to the special. Yeah, right. meeting. The motion carries. We will now adjourn to the special town meeting. If the clerk would please read the special town meeting warrant.
Special Town Meeting, Plymouth SS, to either the Constable of the Town of Whitman. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Whitman qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Town Hall in said Whitman on Monday, the sixth day of May 2019, at 7:45 p.m., then and there to act upon the following articles, Articles 1 through 9. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof in not less than eight public places in the town, 14 days at least before the day of said meeting. Hereof fail naught and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of holding said meetings. Given under our hands this ninth day of April 2019, Dr. Carl F. Kowalski, Chair; Daniel L. Salvucci, Vice Chair; Brian J. Bazanson, Clerk; Scott J. Lamb, BAC Member; Randy G. Lamatina, Jr., Member. Warrant attestation. I hereby certify that by virtue of the written warrant, I have posted eight copies of said warrant in various sections of town, with two copies in each precinct dated April 17, 2019, attested, Constable Christine M. May Stafford. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Article 1, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $1,1225.13 from available water and sewer retained earnings to fund the balance of the water and sewer superintendent salary for FY 2019, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion. We have a second. Discussion. All right, then we'll open the polling on Article 1 of the special town meeting. The polling is closed.
It's not showing yet.
It's not showing? Can we get it to show?
Nope. Josh doesn't know. I don't know. But it is recording.
Doesn't do us any good. Hey, we're having a technical problem here. Hang on one second. Okay, and that's the one we just voted?
It's just not showing in the presentation.
Okay, okay. Well, the motion carries. Article 1 carries. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from the available water and sewer retained earnings to fund the purchase of water from the city of Brockton, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. We have discussion. Come forward, please.
It's a motion to amend Article 2, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $104,000 from available sewer and water retained earnings to fund the purchase... From available sewer and water retained earnings to fund the purchase of water from the city of Brockton, or take any action relative thereto. This is to fund a shortfall in the water purchase.
Okay, we have a motion to amend special town meeting Article 2, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $104,000 from available sewer and water retained earnings to fund the purchase of water from the city of Brockton, or take any other action relative thereto. Do we have a second? Discussion. All in favor of amending special town meeting Article 2? You may vote now. Opposed, you may also vote. Okay, polling is closed, and the article is amended. And now discussion of the amended Article 2. Do we have any discussion of amended Article 2? Okay, then we may now move to vote, then, on the amended Article 2. Yes. Can we just wait till the polling's closed?
Finance Committee voted 8-0 to recommend... Sorry. Thank you.
And the motion is adopted. The article is adopted. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to transfer $237.71 from the budget Article Three, to see if the town will vote to transfer $237.71 from the budget line 95 maintenance expense of the May 7, 2018 annual town meeting to pay for a prior fiscal year bill to work in gear or take any other action relative thereto. A motion and a second. Discussion. All right, then we can vote on Article Three. Article Three, just so you know, requires a nine-tenths majority in order to pass. And the polling is closed, and the article is adopted. Article Four, to see if the town will accept General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53, F and Three Quarters, which establishes a special revenue fund to reserve cable franchise fees and other cable-related revenues for appropriation to support PEG access services and oversight and renewal of the cable franchise agreement, the fund to begin operation for fiscal year 2020, which begins on July 1, 2019, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Lyman?
Currently, the Whitman Hansen Cable Access Committee, formed by the towns of Whitman and Hansen, serve our cable programs for public education and governmental access. The cost of providing that service is provided by a surcharge that Comcast assesses on each bill. Currently, the funds are paid directly from Comcast to the Cable Access Company. The Department of Revenue has established a rule that as of July 1, 2019, those funds must first come to the Town of Whitman and then be appropriated at a town meeting, much the way we're spending all of the other money that we propose spending tonight. The funds will be placed in a special revenue fund. That fund will be restricted to cable access operations. It should not ultimately change how things are done and how cable access for the community channels is handled.
Other discussion. Mr. Salvucci.
Yeah, Dan Salvucci, 34 Land Ave. My question is where the money is coming to the town, and then we give it to the cable studio. We had changed that years ago so that the town is not at all held responsible if anything situation at the cable studio happens. Is this going to make us responsible for any type of legal action if we're involved in payment to the town, you know, to this cable?
Mr. Lyman.
When we formed the Cable Access Corporation with the assistance of William Solomon, who was an expert on FTC and cable affairs, he provided us with the guidance that we used in setting this system up. The purpose in having a separate corporation is to have an arm's length separation between the town and the Cable Access Company. The reason for that most primarily is because if an action is taken by the Cable Access Group that results in someone filing a complaint that their civil rights have been violated, we don't want to be a defendant. So for that reason, the corporation stands alone. The funding does not obligate us to assume liability for the corporation.
Further discussion on Article Four. All right, then we'll move to vote then on Article Four. Polling is closed, and the article is adopted. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $7,898.65 from free cash to reimburse the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for the replacement of rooftop unit servicing, the guidance suite at Conley Elementary School, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. All right, let's open the polling then on Article Five. Polling is closed, and the article is adopted. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $11,716 from free cash to reimburse the Whitman Hansen Regional School District for the purchase and installation of a new boiler stack at Whitman Middle School or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and second. Discussion. All right, we'll now vote on Article Six. And the polling is closed, and the article is adopted. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $105,261.67 from the available Green Communities Grant Fund to make interest and principal payment on bond anticipation notes issued on June 20, 2018 for the purchase and installation of streetlights or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and discussion. Discussion. All right, let's move to vote then on Article Seven. The polling is closed, and the article is adopted. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $52,000 from free cash to provide for Phase II assessment of Harding Pond and semi-annual assessment of the Harding and Hobart dams as required by the Office of Dam Safety or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and second. Discussion. Okay, we'll move to vote on Article Eight. Polling is closed, and the article is adopted. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $61,000 from free cash to pay for consulting and engineering services required to comply with the Massachusetts Small MS-4 general permit requirements, which became effective July 1, 2018, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Could you state your name and your address, please?
Sorry. Cindy Landerville, 20 Harvard Street. I have a question on that. What is the Small MS-4 general requirements, general permit requirements? Can somebody explain those?
Sir.
Bruce Martin, 54 Park Ave., Highway Superintendent. This is requirement by the DEP and the state regarding stormwater, all stormwater, your catch basin's in town, your outfalls in town, any stormwater runoffs from construction sites over a certain acreage, and it's been mandated by the federal government and state government, and this is to help us with technical assistance from an engineering firm. It involves a lot of things like testing water at outfalls and having, you know, going around to every water pipe outfall that falls into any river or brook or stream and having that tested, and to be in compliance with the state or otherwise the town could be fined.
So that has no, no, hmm, how do I want to say it, with Article Eight? It has nothing to do with Article Eight at all?
No, no, and it's been, just to be clear, it's not sewer, it's storm drain. It's the water that falls from the sky and goes into the catch basins.
And that's also affected by all the construction that's going on, as far as the water tables and the shifts and...
Yeah, there's certain things that builders have to comply with when they're building certain projects over a certain acreage, where they have to control the stormwater that comes off of impervious material like lodge parking lots, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on Article Nine? Yes, sir. They can move to the microphone, sir, please.
Jerry Blumenthal, 50, in place. Both the expenditures in Article Eight or Nine are far mandatory required regulatory expenses by the state. So my question is, and they're known expenses that, for these regulatory expenses, and my question is, why aren't they included in the Public Works Department budget versus raise and appropriate?
Mr. Martin?
With the exception of sewer and water, all of the DPW budgets are raise and appropriate. But I mean under Article Two. Under Article Two budget versus a special town meeting. It's a matter of how it was requested, and these are unusual expenditures. We're not going to spend $50,000 a year or $40,000 a year, as the case may be. So until we have a determination of how this is going to be addressed and what the budgetary impact is, it would be by Article. Your point is well taken. Once we know what those costs are, it should be built into Article Two, which is our general government article. These are regularly occurring expenses mandated by state regulations. I would think you'd had these in the past, and they're not new or special. That's all I have to say.
Well, I would add that some of these regulations, they've been, to use the term, kicking the can down the road. The state has been, they passed some of these rules, and then they didn't implement them, and then they would have meetings and hearings on them, and then they wouldn't even implement them again. And then this year it takes effect July 1, and hold another set of regulations, and that's what we need to start working on now. That's why it's in the special.
Other questions on Article Nine? Okay, then let's vote on Article Nine. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn the special town meeting and resume the annual town meeting. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Please vote on that. And the motion is adopted, the special town meeting is adjourned. We now resume the annual town meeting. I'd like to take a recess of a few minutes to allow everybody to look through Article Two, the next article that we will consider. And we should all have that spreadsheet.
No, I know. And of course, yeah. Let's move to 10 seconds.
I want to mention that.
When I back out, I can talk. They stop.
[inaudible]
Oh, yeah, she's here. During the playoffs. I'm in the playoffs. I get on the bad way.
Who is your favorite team?
Football, baseball. I watch pretty much all, certainly my favorite team. At least three quarters of the right side. Yeah. When they're in the playoffs, I get on the bad way. I like it. Hockey doesn't have enough scoring, and basketball is too much scoring.
All right, another minute or two. Okay, folks, if we could reconvene from our recess here. Article 2, "To determine how much money the town will raise and appropriate for general government, protection of persons and property, health and sanitation, public works, veterans' benefits, education, library, recreation, and unclassified specifying what appropriation shall be taken from the receipt of a department or take any other action relative thereto." Do we have a motion? A motion and a second. Okay, what I'm going to do now is go down through this spreadsheet in 25 line increments. And as I go through that, if you have a question about a particular line item, please shout out question and the number of the line item. Okay, so lines 1 through 25.
Question 5.
Question 5. Question 7. 6. Okay, lines 26 through 50. 25. 34. 44. Forty-seven, forty-eight, and 50. Okay, lines 51 through 75.
57.
Lines 76 through 100. 93. Lines 101 through 123. I'm sorry? Did I hear 130? No? Okay. I did, okay. 130 through 150. 131. 142. 145. 151 through 175.
175.
175. 178 through 200. 184. 197. 201 through 225. 210. I didn't get that. 205. 226 through 250. 239. 245. 251 through 263. 252. 400 through 425. 421. 410. 426 through 440. All right, so the lines I have questioned are 5, 6, 7, 25, 34, 44, 47, 48, 50, 57, 75, 93, 130, 131, 142, 145, 175, 184, 197, 205, 210, 239, 245, 252, 410, and 421. Are there any others? Line 60. 170. Any others? All right, then what we will do now then is vote the unquestioned line items as a package. Voting on the Finance Committee recommendations for all of the unquestioned line items.
Sorry, any quick question?
Sir?
On page 16, between line 54 and 57, there are three categories there that don't actually have line items. I do have a question on one of those line items.
So 54?
No, it's one of the three in between, it's the top one, Law Department, in between line 54 and 57. There are no line numbers there.
Okay.
By questioning 57, any of those lines can be discussed.
Okay, so then line 57, sorry.
So you're covered. Okay. Okay, so what we'll do now then is vote on the unquestioned line items as a package according to the Finance Committee recommendations. Are you ready? Okay, just hang on one second. Okay? Okay, so we can vote on all of the unquestioned line items now.
Ready?
Just a minute. And the polling is closed, and the unquestioned line items are adopted. Okay, now we'll proceed to a discussion of all of each of the questioned line items, and then we'll vote on each of them individually. Line item 5. Sir?
I have a motion to amend line item 5.
A motion to amend line item 5? We have an amendment to line item 5. I am submitting today in writing a request to amend Article 2 of the annual town meeting warrant. I am requesting that line item 5, Town Administrator's salary, be amended to the amount of $1. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second discussion. Sir?
I am right now, sir. My name is Marshall Otino, 100 Lazell Street in Whitman. A year full of negligence and broken promises has brought the town of Whitman to where we are today. At town meeting last year, and even in the lead up to it, the messaging from our Town Administrator, Board of Selectmen, and Finance Committee indicated that we were heading to a financial crisis. On this much, they were right. We face tonight, a year later, departmental budget cuts across the board. Even the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District, which is receiving an increase of funds, will still not be able to offer the same services next year, thanks in part to the 19 positions they are losing. This is far from just a school issue, however. These cuts will affect our public safety departments, DPW, library, and recreation, just to name a few. We face these budget woes despite last year's forewarnings. We were told that an operational override was how we could make these departments whole again. Whatever your individual position on higher taxes are as a voter, and your belief as to whether or not it could pass, this was what Town Hall told us the fix was last May, and then they sat. Where is our plan for the override? More than a year after our town leadership identified both the problem and the solution, we have no plan to offer that solution to the voters. The Selectmen and the Town Administrator have admitted as much publicly, saying that they did not adequately prepare an override plan, but now they can have one ready for the fall. We're being asked to immediately give up manpower at the fire department, library services, adequate first grade class sizes, opiate addiction outreach, and more, so that the same people that brought us no tangible plans in the last 12 months can have another six to figure it out. And not only that, the Town Administrator would like a raise. We have seen that salary grow from $99,000 to over $127,000 in the last four years. The money itself is not the problem, but it represents a failed investment on our part. We are paying the Town Administrator more and more, while the departments he oversees offering us less and less. Our town is undoubtedly worse off than it was at this meeting last year, and for this reason, tonight, I am requesting that we amend line item 5 of Article 2 to read $1. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Further discussion on amending line item 5? Mr. Kane?
Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. First of all, I'd just like to say that there's been a lot of tension lately. For me, though, if you're sitting in this hall, then you have my respect. Apathy and the lack of civic engagement is a true enemy. It's an honor to be here tonight with you. I believe that line number 5 is one of the most important lines in the budget. The Town Administrator plays a critical role in the budget process. The position should be paid well, for the well-being of the community very much depends on this individual. Today, when I reflect on the events of last year, it's obvious that we're in a precarious situation. Our community is in financial crisis. Our local government is not run well. We are missing essential best practices that are designed to protect us. The last couple of years, I considered this to be reckless. This year, I believe it to be not only reckless, but unacceptable. The Town Administrator needs to shoulder this burden, but what should we do about it? I've thought about this long and hard. Should we take aggressive action, zero out this line, and make demands on the Board of Selectmen? I don't, Marshall. I don't think that we should. Here's why. The solution to this problem will be very complex. It will demand cooperation and strategy, and the logistical business of plans and policy. It needs to be thorough, if it's going to be done right. That cannot be done by force. It must be willfully chosen. Willfully chosen by all parties involved, but especially by the Town Administrator. And that is the message that I would like to share tonight. I'm speaking to you, but I'm also reflecting on this myself as a way to guide my own actions. Let's put partisan and aggressive politics aside. Let's hold ourselves to a high standard, and let's work together to implement best practices so we can save our community. Mr. Linum, I'm specifically asking you to shoulder this burden. Rise to the occasion and meet the demanding expectations of this line. Is that something that you are willing to do? If it is, then I don't support the amendment, I support the line as initially read.
Further discussion on line item 5? Mr. Linum?
I don't make it a habit of getting up here and talking about my position of my salary. You had two pointed comments from two different speakers. There are things underway that will help us move forward. Last year, I engaged the Collins Center to conduct a capital study and a budget analysis so that a more thorough and supported document could be presented to not only this town meeting, but the voters in general. I received a draft on that last Wednesday. I edited and returned it because basic information was missing, and some of the information was incorrect. There is a point to be made here. We are really in a situation where we have to make some pretty tough decisions over the next year or so. This is not something that we arrived at overnight, and we all know that. You have a decentralized form of government. I do not have any say over what many of the department, nor do the Selectmen, have a say over many of the departments in this town, because they are all headed by elected personnel. However, my job is to be a facilitator and to bring people together and to get us going in the same direction. Sometimes it's herding cats, sometimes it's easier. But we respect one another, and we will do the things we need to do. On a completely selfless point, if you're unhappy with my performance, talk to the people who hire me, the Board of Selectmen, but you don't zero out a line. You don't eliminate the possibility of having someone work. That's just foolish.
Further discussion on line item 5? Sir?
Hi, Neil Gorman, 28 Court Street. First question, are we still talking about the amendment to line item?
We are talking about the amendment to line item 5, yes.
Okay, I was just talking on the line itself.
Any further discussion on amending line item 5 to $1? Any further discussion on amending line item five to $1? All right, then we will vote on the amendment, whether we should amend line item five to read $1. Yes? I'm sorry? I'm sorry, I can't see you, ma'am. If you come to a microphone, you may, yes.
I would like to speak about that line item. Laura Howe, 185 School Street.
Yes, ma'am.
I look around this room, and I know almost every person here, and I understand as much as anyone about what's going on. I have never seen our town so divided in my entire 52 years of life. I am extremely saddened and disheartened that we would discuss a gentleman's salary to go to line out zero as a last resort. This gentleman I know personally and work with, and has dealt with him for three years on a regular basis, who has helped me every single step of the way make this town better. I have not heard anyone give any one of the people standing up there any credit whatsoever. I am not just Laura Howe, Animal Control. I am Laura Howe voter, and I am Laura Howe Whitmanite, and a person that is proud of this town, and proud of every single person in it, whether they disagree with Mr. Lyman or our selectmen, or our chief of police, or our chief fireman. Everyone in this town that works for this town is a good person, and I don't know when we started picking up pitchforks and flames. I saw this happen when it happened to Annie, and I stood up, and I'm standing up for the gentlemen and women of this town right now, not as a person that even has anything really to lose, because I basically pay you to work for Whitman, if you look at my salary. So I don't have anything in, like, any gains here. I have no benefits. I'm not even a full-time employee, but you know what? I love this town, and not once have I complained about my salary. And I actually said I'd give up my salary to save somebody's job. And I'm all for community support, but I am sickened and disheartened by the way you've treated a man that I have watched work more than overtime, who I have seen this, him personally, save this town millions of dollars. And everyone here knows what I'm speaking of. This man is a good man, and I beg everyone that I know that has known me since I went to Holt School to think in your heart.
Ma'am, if you could address the chair, please. Thank you.
Well, think of your heart of what you're doing, like, zeroing out. Look at all the other towns. We're not much different, and it's not from just town, it's state and federal level. That's all I have to say, except for thank you, a sincere thank you from everyone I know in town that appreciates every person up there.
Any further discussion on amending line item five? Okay, then we'll move to vote on the amending of line item five to read $1. Polling is closed, the motion fails. Further discussion of line item five. Sir?
Again, Neil Gorman, 28 Court Street. I think, I want to thank Administrator Lyman for his work, but we're in a time of tightening budgets. Everybody, we, at some point, we were $3 million short on the total budget, and everybody raced around, put everything together, and somehow came up with what we're looking at today. In recent years, every department head in the past four years has gotten roughly 20% increase in salary and a slush fund to help fund their department. I see on this, in addition, that we're talking about cutting people's jobs, we're talking about slashing everything. Every single department head is still getting a 1% pay raise. I understand there is inflation issues, but we're talking about, oh, we're going to lay off all these people, but the department head still gets a 1% pay raise. And I disagree with all of them, and I'm going to disagree with all, including yours, and I'd ask you to defend that pay raise in light of all these budget issues. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, we're going to move to vote then on line item five to read the Finance Committee recommendation of $128,169. And the line item passes. It is adopted. Line item six, we had a question on six.
The 10 seconds didn't show up. Do you want to re-vote that line?
It didn't show up?
Didn't show up.
Okay, we'll re-vote the line then. Let's re-vote it then. Hang on, wait one second. Let me know when it's ready. Okay, we can vote now. Vote on line item five. Polling is closed, and the line item is not adopted. Point of order.
Robert Kimball, Albinville Way. Point to the town council. If we took a vote, and then the moderator decided to retake the vote, the original vote, shouldn't that stand and ask for a reconsideration of the original vote?
We don't have an original vote, huh? But I called it down. Kind of counting on this to work better than it is. Yes, ma'am.
So I was trying to follow, and the angle is such for where I'm sitting on the screen. So my understanding was the first vote got questioned, that folks were saying they couldn't, it wasn't working.
Apparently, we had a technical issue, yeah.
So I don't know if that would be a reconsideration of the vote. It was a re-vote because there was a technical glitch. Do you still have?
I don't have the original vote because there was a glitch. So I have this vote, the one that was deleted.
I will point out that you do have a point of order problem, is that you now have a line item there has been no vote on to appropriate any money. So somebody's going to have to make a motion to do something else with it.
We could take a motion to reconsider.
Well, you could take a motion to reconsider. Somebody, and once you do that, then somebody could make a motion to amend if they are not in favor of the FINCOM number and want to look at a different number, but you're going to need to do something, because right now you have an unfunded line.
Do we have a motion to reconsider? Wait one second. Okay, all right. So we have a motion to reconsider the vote on Article Five in a second. Do we have any discussion on that? Yes, please.
Stephen Santos.
I'm sorry, I recognize the gentleman in the back there. You'll have your turn in a second, sir.
Bob Kimball, Albinville Way. Could we ask what the original vote was and what the second vote was on the numbers, or at least the number of people that voted? The first vote and the second vote.
First vote.
The first vote we didn't have because there was a glitch, so they made, a motion was made to re-vote.
Okay.
Right.
If there was a glitch, we saw a percentage up on the board. What caused that percentage? What was the numbers of that percentage?
I don't know. That was a glitch. But the vote was 156 yes and 196 no.
That was on the second vote.
That was on the second vote.
But on the first vote, you have no idea what the numbers were. So there's a glitch in the system because it was 51% to 49% in favor. That's the number that came up on the board.
I didn't, I can't see.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to vote a motion unless there's a motion on the floor to reconsider.
We have a motion on the floor to reconsider. Any further discussion on reconsidering line item five? Sir?
My name's Stephen Santos. I live at 169 Plymouth Street here in Whitman. I actually have a lot of respect for Mr. Lyman. I think he's done a very good job from what I've seen. However, we have a clear vote from this meeting that more or less is a vote of, appears to be a vote of non-confidence in the man. It doesn't say that, but the vote is to not fund the line item. The, you know, there is an apparent intention that is here from this.
The motion right now is to reconsider that vote. So if we could keep your comments confined to that question, we can move on from there.
Yes, I would suggest that we not reconsider the vote.
Okay. Any further discussion on reconsidering? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Chrissy Pruitt, 4 Village Way. If we vote not to, if we vote no, would the salary default to a 0% increase?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that might be a clarification, that people are thinking that it's voting for an increase.
It's not. What you had before you was a vote to fund the line item at the $128,169 figure, which was the FINCOM's recommendation. When that failed, there's now no appropriation for that line item. So if you wanted, and I'm not instructing the meeting, but seeing that there's a number of these that have been questioned that have a 1% increase proposed, before that vote goes forward, one option would be for somebody to move to amend and move the requested amount, which is the amount that's the same as this year, without the 1%, right? That's not what happened. The number that went forward was the increased number. It failed, so there's no appropriation. You need to reconsider so that you can look at the line item again, and then once it's reconsidered, you could move a different amount. But until you move a different amount, there's no funding for that line item.
Thank you very much.
I hope that helps. And one last thing, whoever moved to reconsider, were you on the prevailing side? I don't know who moved, but a motion to reconsider has to be made from somebody who was on the prevailing side of the original motion. So that means somebody who voted in the negative.
Good, very well. Okay. Any further discussion of reconsidering line item five? Yes, Mr. Grunno.
Tim Grunno, 230 Temple Street. I just want to clear up some confusion on why Mr. Lyman and why the rest of the department heads have listed a 1% pay raise in their line items. Every other, just about every other employee, police, fire, schoolteachers, school administration, everybody is receiving pay increases, much more than the 1% pay raise that the selectmen have voted to give to the, to the department heads. We had a department head meeting. It was asked of us if we wanted a 2% or if we would be comfortable taking a 1%. And all of the department heads voted, because of the situation in town, we would take a 1%. So that's where the 1% pay raise comes from for all of the department heads in town. Any questions?
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, just to clarify, and there is, you know, there was a lot of discussion, and the discussion, and I'm going to try to keep my comments brief, but they're about reining in salaries, and this Finance Committee is committed to making sure that we make every effort to rein in salaries. What we proposed with this particular line item and that of the other administrators is that the proposal that the initial came before the Finance Committee was for a 2% raise, we are hoping that this 1% raise is the beginning of other departments and other collective bargaining units to consider reining in future salaries. This is something that the Finance Committee is wholly committed to, and hopefully we get the support from town meeting. So what this 1% raise represents is the Finance Committee's recommendation to pair a 2% raise and start the ball rolling in that direction. I just wanted to clarify what that 1% actually meant. Thank you. And just to further clarify, the Finance Committee would hope that you recommend this 1% and the line item as it's written. Thank you.
Any further discussion on reconsidering line item five? All right, then let's take a vote. Then a vote for yes is a vote to reconsider line item five, and a no vote would be not to reconsider that and leave it at zero. Okay. Okay, then the motion passes. The line can now be reconsidered. Do I have a motion? So we have a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommendation. Do we have a second? Second. Any further discussion? Article five is reconsidered, and now we have a motion for the Finance Committee's recommended number. All right. All right, then let's vote on that then. Line item five, to adopt the Finance Committee's recommendation or not? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What are we doing?
I just had to put in what you said.
Okay, we all, we outside?
Yep, it's up there.
Okay. Wait a second. Can we reopen that vote?
Yeah, I am. I'm going to reopen.
Okay, so we're going to reopen the vote then on line item five. A yes vote is for the Finance Committee recommendation. Yes. Voting again. And the line item is adopted. The Finance Committee's line item is adopted. Line item six. We had a question on line item six. Any question on line item six? No question on line item six? Then we'll vote on line item six, again, on the Finance Committee's recommendation. And line item six is adopted. Line item seven, question on line item seven. Sir? Sir?
John Gold Rosen, 230 H. South Avenue. My question's really on, on this and some other lines. There doesn't seem to be consistency in the amount of the raises for various personnel. You know, this one's, some of them I see are 3.1, some are different amounts, and that's my question.
Mr. Lyman?
There are two answers to that. The first answer is the lines that reflect non-management employees are all union positions. They are covered under a collective bargaining agreement that was approved at this meeting two years ago. Year three of the collecting bargaining agreement has steps for longevity. Most of those employees have been here 15 or more years. And the step raise for the 15th year is an additional increase over the 2%. The second reason is managers are paid an annual salary. Whether there are 300, 260 workdays in the year or 262 workdays in the year, we're paid the same salary. We can't do that with non-management people. They're entitled to be paid for every day they work. This year, I get to work for free for two days if you take my salary and divide it the same way you do the other employees. That's just a consequence of the salaried positions. So every year, we budget, we set the salaries, and then we divide by the number of workdays if you're non-union or by the number of weeks if you're union. And that's how it's calculated.
Any other questions on line item seven? Yes, ma'am?
Elizabeth Capel Bianchi, 253 Washington Street. I am an administrative assistant in the private sector. 7.2% raise is more than double what most administrative assistants in the private sector are receiving currently. I would like to know why an administrative assistant in municipal, in a municipality is getting a seven, is proposed to get a 7.2% raise. That's unheard of in the private sector.
Mr. Lyman?
While it's not common, it is not unheard of. There are a number of times that people are compensated for their experience and their performance. Our contract that's governing these salaries, again, union personnel, provide salary increases for step one, two, three, four, five, first five years. Next step is 10 years. Next step is 15 years. So those folks that are getting those high raises are getting an increase because they've completed 15 years of service, and their rate goes from 2,563 to 2,640 in the case of the senior administrators. In the case of the level two or level one clerical employees, it's 2,488 to 2,563 or 2,415 to 2,487. These are not uncommon, and they are perhaps somewhat comparable to what you see in other semi-professional contracts.
Further questions on line item seven? All right, then, we'll move to vote, then, on line items, on the finance committee's recommendation for line item seven. And line item seven is adopted according to the finance committee recommendation. Line item 25. We have a question on 25. All right, then, we'll move to a vote on, I'm sorry, sir?
Well, the accounting department, I understand that you guys have had extremely busy time in the past five, nine months, whatever. But it seems that the town keeps outsourcing its accounting things, having separate, individual people look at them, look at the, the funding and the budgets. It seems that we're having the UMass Boston Foundation looking at our accounting, so I'm wondering what the point is of having an accounting department continue.
Mr. Lyman?
We do not outsource our accounting. Our accountant is responsible for $43 million in funds that are accounted for over roughly 300 appropriation lines. What we have outsourced is a process that will help us to move forward in our planning. We have an accountant that was hired a year ago. He does an exceptional job. The salary is well within comparable ranges. It's actually lower than most of the comparable communities. But I, I really don't want anyone to think that any of that work is outsourced. The state requires that we have a town accountant. It's a legal requirement. And the town accountant is ultimately responsible for all the numbers that are presented to the DOR when our, but our tax rate is certified, to the various departments that need his support in calculating their business and in paying every bill. The accountant approves every bill that this town gets, whether it's a $2 invoice or a $2 million invoice. It's a lot of work for one manager and one employee.
Further questions on line item 25? Okay, there being none other, we'll move to vote, then, on the finance committee's recommendation of line item 25. And 25 is adopted. Line item 34, questions on 34? Any questions? Okay, then, we will move to a vote on line item 34, the finance committee's recommendation. And line item 34 is adopted. Line item 44, questions on 44? No questions on 44? Then we'll move to vote on the finance committee's recommendation for line item 44. Line 44 is adopted. Line 47, question on 47? Mr. Lyman?
Just for point of clarification, all of those salaries are contractual. We have signed a contract, and we have committed to making those payments. So I just want you to understand that the, these are things that, if we don't fund them, put us in conflict with both the union and ultimately with the Department of Labor relations. So please support those.
Further discussion of 47? All right, we'll move to voting, then, on the finance committee's recommendation for line 47. And 47 is adopted. Line number 48, question on 48? No question on 48? Then we'll move to a vote, then, on the finance committee's recommendation for line 48. And 48 is adopted. Line 50, question on 50? No question on 50? Then we'll move to vote, then, on the finance committee's recommendation for line 50. And line 50 is adopted. Line 57, question on 57? Sir?
Chris Marks, 484 Hog Memorial Drive. Just looking for an explanation of a 27.6% increase in that line.
Mr. Lyman?
Unfortunately, it isn't actually an increase. We had to transfer money last year, and we spent $187,000. What's happening is we are in a very litigious society, and we are finding more and more instances where we are involved in legal proceedings as they are connected to the town. We also have significant legal expense in our collective bargaining process, where we have to bargain with each of five unions with labor council on both sides. This is going to be an expensive year. We currently have two active suits that our council is involved in, and I expect some other issues to come up. So, what choice do we have?
Any other questions on 57? Okay, then, we'll move to vote on the finance committee's recommendation for line 57. And 57 is adopted. Line 60, question on line 60? No question on 60? Then we will vote on the finance committee's recommendation for line 60. And line 60 is adopted. Line 93. Question on 93? I'm sorry? Do we have 75? We did have 75? I'm sorry. So, line 75, I'm sorry, line 75? Any questions on 75? All right, then, we will vote the finance committee's recommendation for line 75. And 75 is adopted. Line 93. Questions on 93? No questions on 93? Then we will move to vote on the finance committee's recommendation for line 93. Yes? I'm sorry, so we're voting right now?
I just asked a question.
We're not, okay, all right. Okay, we're not in voting mode? Okay, okay, then we're not in voting mode? Okay, then, it, I'm sorry. Could you repeat your question, sir?
Uh, the question is why the big increase? If you look at the other lines associated with this budget, we have a $49,000 appropriation in 93A that was going to be... Do you remember what the number was? 50? It was going to be in excess of $50,000. When we started working on the budget, we asked people to make compromises on costs to reduce the total expense. So what we've done is we've, we will discontinue, subject to the fact that town meeting is no longer funding that contract, we will discontinue that service, and we will expect our maintenance person at half the cost to pick up those added responsibilities. I don't know if next year we're going to do the same thing. He may be so exhausted, he'll say, "I'm not going to do it anymore." But right now, that means he's going to be working 19 to 20 extra hours a week in order to save basically $29,000.
Any other questions on 93? Okay, then, we get to it? But let's move to a vote, then, on the finance committee's recommendation on line item 93. And 93 is adopted. Line 130, questions on 130? Okay, if there's no questions on 130, we'll move to vote on that, the finance committee's recommendation for line 130. And 130 is adopted. Line 131, question on 131? Mr. Lyman?
When we bargained our contract with FIRE two years ago, we agreed that in year three, we would introduce an administrative deputy for the department to assist in its management. Because of the financial circumstances wherein, we have chosen not to fill that position this year.
Any other comment on 131? All right, then, we will vote on the finance committee's recommendation for 131. And 131 is adopted. Line 142, question on 142? No question on 142? Then we will move to vote the finance committee recommendation on 142. And 142 is adopted. Line 145, question on 145? No question on 145? Then we'll vote to, then we'll vote on the finance committee's recommendation for 145. And 145 is adopted. 170, question on 170? Sir?
Jared Taylor, 171, Captain Allen Way. Sorry, Jared Taylor, 171, Captain Allen Way. So, this line item represents almost 12% of the total school budget. How many students is represented by going to the VOTEC schools? Sir? And as a follow-up, what percentage is that of all Whitman students?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Through you to town meeting, my name is Tom Hickey. I'm the superintendent-director at South Shore. So we are a separate school. We are not part of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. So I'm not sure if your original question was tied to the overall budget.
Well, Whitman's paying for your school?
Correct.
That's correct? So I'm just, I just want to know a couple of things.
Sure.
How many students from Whitman attend the school?
145.
145? And how many students does that, are in the Whitman schools? And what are, what are the costs per head for each of those? And what are, what are the costs per head for each of those?
I'd have to defer to the Whitman-Hanson School District to answer your second question. Well, your other question was...
I'm just trying to get the relationship of cost per head for each school?
Sure.
And then is, as a follow-up question, is there a cap on the number of students that can go to the vocational schools?
No.
Okay.
Our per pupil cost for Whitman is about $11,000 a student.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on line 170? All right, then let's vote on the Finance Committee's recommendation for line 170. And 170 is adopted. Line 175, question on 175? Yes, yes ma'am.
Kathleen Otina, 344 Washington Street. I have a question about the impact that this appropriation has on the staffing of the Whitman-Hanson School Department. Could the superintendent address how many positions are eliminated and to a certain extent, who those people are? And I have a follow-up question after this.
Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Simonak, Superintendent of Schools. With this appropriation of 8.5% in the assessment, we will lose 19 positions, from central office to paraprofessionals to duty aides. It's across the board. Did you have a follow-up question?
Which schools and what kind?
That it affects every school. Every school in the district.
Other questions on 175? I just want to see, but does anybody else have a question on 175? Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, so then my follow-up question is, we are anticipating an operational override in the fall, six months from now. How will this help the schools?
Sir?
So there's been plans in place, there's some discussions at Selective Meeting and at FinCom meetings about an operational override for both towns. The goal would be to be, to put a plan in place to support foreign language, elementary education, social-emotional learning, and also full day K. Those plans haven't been put in motion yet, but I'm optimistic that we will work together as, in a collaborative effort within both towns to make sure that happens.
Any, Mr. Linum?
But you also need to understand that Whitman does not operate in a vacuum. We're a region. And in order to fund, the assessments on a percentage basis have to be based on student population. If we were to increase, for example, $400,000 and Hanson did not approve that increase and the result of a joint town meeting did not approve that increase, then that payment could not be made. We're joined at the hip.
Ma'am?
Chrissy Pruitt, 4 Village Way. I just want to make a point, there's, my, my mind is racing right now because there's so much about this. It's very, very complex. First of all, noting that it's an 8.5% increase, that's on the assessment. But just so people understand, it's a 3.6%, I think, percent overall increase. It's not an 8.5% increase. And I'm, you know, on social media, reading what's out there, people think that our school district is getting an 8.5% increase. That is not the case. Secondly, the fact that we are losing foreign language, we don't even have enough as it is. Foreign language actually taps the cognitive brain to help our children increase cognitive skills. When you, we are now trying to educate our children for jobs that do not exist and we don't know what jobs will exist. So when we are trying to, when we're losing programs that are enhancing those foundational skills, it is just such a disservice to our, to our, to our kids. We are already behind in Whitman-Hanson. Our teachers and our administrators are doing a phenomenal job not having the resources that they need. Our students are in crisis. We continue to outplay students for special education because of the increase in social-emotional needs that are out there. We need to do something as a town, and if it means we go to a joint meeting, we need to do it because our kids deserve it. Mr. Simonak and Mr. Farrell have adopted a mess and they are doing an amazing job trying to get it back to where it needs to be. When I moved into this town 14 years ago, my next-door neighbor came over and she was in high school and we had students going to Ivy Leagues, I'm sure we still do, but the colleges are not looking at Whitman-Hanson High School like they used to. We deserve to, to help our kids and we have to, we have to fight for them. And I will continue to say it over and over again, but the fact that my son is going to high school and I'm looking at other options breaks my heart. I am a public school educator. That's what I do. It's what I believe in. And we as a town, Whitman, we have to do something about this. We have to do something. And yes, it's the three, it's, you know, we have to vote this, but in the future, we need to stand up. We need to stand up for what our kids, our kids need. Thank you.
Further questions on 175? Ma'am?
This is my final comment. I was here last year when I was led to believe, as I think many others were, that we would be voting for an operational override, knowing that there was this incredible crisis, financial crisis. It wasn't hidden. It didn't appear six months ago. A year ago, we knew about this. We're voting about $34 million tonight. We don't have an opportunity to defend the positions that are being cut from the school that are desperately needed. So I for one resent the fact that there isn't an operational override on the horizon as there is a debt exclusion override. And I think that it's a disservice to the voters of this town and to the parents and grandparents of this town that the schools have been let out to dry because of the lack of foresight and preparation.
Other questions on 175? Sir?
Neil Gorman, 28 Court Street. I'd also like to wonder, not just about the staff, how, we're talking about people being laid off, departments being destroyed, just the, I'm curious as to the quality of the actual school buildings. We had a boiler that just went down in the middle school this winter. We have mold issues in some of the schools. So if someone can respond on that, thank you.
Mr. Linum?
Once again, it's part of the capital needs that we're facing. We have a capitalist that not including a middle school either replacement or substantial renovation exceeds $30 million. So we're going to have to prioritize and we're going to have to work on it. But I don't think anybody in this room is prepared to vote a tax rate that'll increase our tax bills by $30 million. So we're going to have to work it through.
Any other questions on 175? Sir?
Hello, my name is Tyler Swan. I live at 39 Thayer Avenue. And I basically wanted to give a perspective from the student's perspective. Right now, I'm a senior at Whitman-Hanson Regional High School and I basically have been speaking to many of the employees and staff throughout the district and we basically see how the budget, as it's been proceeding and how it may proceed and how it really affects their day-to-day lives. And I speak from people in the elementary school level, although at the high school level. And many of the issues, one of the largest concerns would be such of class size and quality of education and some range from, especially for the elementary school level behavioral counseling and the availability of such with minimal manpower to do so. And one of the things I would like to just state for all here is I wish for the direction that the town goes to be more aware of the needs of the school, not the wants. I really want the school to be able to give the best it can give. And I understand that we're in a financial situation and for this current assessment at 8.5, it's as much as anyone could wish for. But I really wish for the school, as it progresses, to be something that in 20 years, when I plan to settle down with a family, I can choose Whitman, my hometown, and feel proud to do so, that the school district will raise my children with a great education. And that's really what I want to ask of the town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other comment on line 175? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Mara Burt of 43 Crooker Place. I know it's a little out of procedure since I'm from Hanson.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you can't speak if you're, if you're a Hanson resident. I'm sorry. I think we talked about this before the meeting.
Yeah, I was just wondering where I'm a registered voter.
You're not a registered voter in Whitman, ma'am, I'm sorry. You can't speak here. Any, any other comments on 175? We have a motion on the floor right now. We have a motion on the floor right now. We're dealing with 175. Any other que, any other comment on 175? Yes, ma'am?
Jen Roback, 879 Bedford Street, Whitman. My question is what, with the cuts to the staffing, what is the class size is going to go up to?
Sir?
So that can vary depending on the school that you're at. We're looking at losing at least one teacher to two teachers in, in the elementaries and at Hanson Middle School and at the high school. So it can vary from a high school class that might be 28 in a foreign language class right now to an elementary classroom between 23 and 25.
So you said 45 in an elementary class?
No, no, 23 to 25.
25 though.
Not 45, not there yet. That's middle, that's middle school, that's Whitman Middle School, some of the related arts classes. We, we're still struggling and I appreciate you, Tyler. Thank you.
And I have follow-up. And how does this impact the special education population?
So some of the comments out on social media were about loss of paraprofessionals for special ed. It doesn't affect any student that is on an IEP and has a paraprofessional with them. They're non-instructional paraprofessionals that might, might lose their positions.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on 175? Yes, Mr. Otina?
Marsh Otina, 100 Laisel Street. Does this 8.5%, does this, will this cause elimination of music program at the elementary school?
So we have a .2 elementary music teacher who's here once, once a week. That position at $20,000 has been eliminated from this budget, not for the other positions.
Other questions on 175? Are you a Whitman resident, sir?
Yes.
Are you a registered voter in Whitman?
I'm registered, but I'm on the inactive status.
Then you can't speak, I'm sorry, sir.
I just want to...
I'm sorry, sir, you can't speak. You're not allowed to speak unless you're a registered voter in Whitman, active.
Thank you.
He's inactive. He said he's inactive. Any other questions on 175? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Chrissy Pruitt, 4 Village Way. I just want to reiterate that this is what our school department is dealing with. They are making really tough choices with what we, what we're giving them. And I just want to rally the troops to say, "We need to, we need to work on this and we need to fight." There are so many unfunded mandates that continue to come from the state and it is causing our administrators to pull more away from the classroom and actually have to be in their offices, filling out reports and, and civil rights, all that stuff. So it's what, it's what we are dealing with and we have to do something about it. Thank you.
We have a motion, move the question. We, we'll vote on moving the question then? All those in favor of moving to, to vote? Press 1. Not in favor, press 2. We're moving, we're moving, we're moving to end debate and go to a vote, but this, this vote is to end debate.
Okay, so then I have to do something else. I can make another slide.
Let me know when you're ready. Okay, now we can vote to move the question. In other words, a vote to end debate. Okay, and the, the vote is adopted. Debate is ended. We'll now vote on the Finance Recommendation, Finance Committee's recommendation on line 175. And 175 is adopted. Line 184, question on 184? We have a question on 184? Sir?
Apartment Public Works, they do tons of variety of things for our town, but for some reason, we still have big potholes in the middle of our roads. And they want 1% raise and 19 people just lost their jobs. Thank you.
Other questions on 184?
Sorry, I didn't identify myself. Neil Gorman, Court Street.
No question? Okay. Any other questions on 184? All right, let's move to vote on the Finance Committee's recommendation on line 184. And 184 is adopted. Line 197, question on 197? No question on 197? We'll, we'll now vote then on the Finance Committee's recommendation for 197. And 197 is adopted. Line 205, question on 205? We have a question on 205? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Denise Taylor, 171 Captain Allen. Just a quick question. Who is the animal inspector and is that a different person than the animal control officer?
Mr. Linum?
Yes, it is a different person. It's a member of the Board of Health that serves as the animal inspector.
Can I just ask one more question? What do they do?
They're involved...
I understand it says animal inspector.
They're, they're involved in quarantines if an animal, I'm sure there are other exotic things they do, but let's leave it with quarantine.
Thank you.
Any other questions on 205? All right, then let's move to vote on the Finance Committee recommendation for line 205. And 205 is adopted. Line 210, question on 210? Any question on 210? No, then we proceed to a vote then on the Finance Committee's recommendation for line 210. And 210 is adopted. Line 239. Question on 239? Any question on 239? All right, then let's vote on the Finance Committee's recommendation for line 239. All right, then let's vote on the Finance Committee's recommendation for line 239. 239 is adopted. Line 245, question on 245. Sir.
Again, Neil Gorman, Court Street. I'd just like to know the status of the upgrades to the lighting system, the LED system, and I know it's another item that we've already gone to in the special town meeting to pay for that. Thank you.
Mr. Linum.
The LED upgrade is almost complete. We're probably 98% there. We ran into a problem attaching the floodlights because the design did not accommodate the current hardware that's on the poles, so it had to be re-procured. We expect, what would you say, Lisa, next month? By next month, it should be 100%. The reason the budget is going down is because of two things. We now own the fixtures that the streetlights are on, and the utility expense, the electricity use is extended to drop. Hopefully, that 100 will be a high number when we revisit it next year.
Other questions on 245? All right, let's move to vote on the Finance Committee's recommendation for line 245. And 245 is adopted. Line 252, question on 252.
Cindy Landeville, 20 Harvard Street. Could you please explain what a Whitman will is?
Mr. Linum.
As you know, we have had a crisis level of opioid addiction in Whitman. Each of the communities surrounding us has formed some type of group to work with people that are suffering from addiction or at risk of addiction and provide them with support to educate and deter both opioids and alcohol.
Other questions on 252? All right, let's move to vote then on the Finance Committee recommendation for line And 252 is adopted. We have a question on 410. Sir.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Wayne Carroll, 32 Meadow Lane. I'm also the vice chairman of the DPW Commission. I would like to amend Article 2, Budget Line 410, to read $99,371.
All right, so we have a motion then to amend line 410 to read $99,371. Do we have a second? Second discussion on amending line 410.
Just as a point of clarification, I'm speaking on behalf of the majority vote of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee had reservations on this particular line. We certainly respect and understand that the DPW Commissioners has the sole responsibility for negotiating this particular salary. Our concern was more with the amount of time that this individual has been on the job and the information that we were given at a previous meeting about what the expected salary for this individual would be. So the reservations were in line with the salary projection of $83,356 that we were given at that meeting, and now we're looking at a 40% increase. So again, the reservations were both with the amount of the salary increase and with the amount of time that this individual has been on the job. Thank you.
Further discussion on amending line 410. Mr. Carroll.
This number that I gave you is the same salary that the superintendent of the highway receives. It's always been equal, it's always been the same. There was a difference when the previous superintendent retired and the money wasn't budgeted, that we had to take, I believe it was $40,000, out of that line item in order to fund his retirement. That's why this went down. I'm not asking for an increase, I'm asking to put it to where it was before.
Any other questions on amending line 410 to read $99,371?
One other thing.
Mr. Carroll.
This gentleman has been working for the DPW for, Dennis, how many years? 25? 23. I gave you two. 23 years, so he's not a rookie. He's been around a long time.
Hi, Deb Seeley, 253 School Street. I just have a question about qualifications. I know back in the day, the superintendent had to have an engineering degree. Is that still the case? Or are there any...
No, that's not.
Other questions on 410? The amendment.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Michelle Winnett, 308 Rayner Ave. Are you saying that this position pays $99,000, essentially?
Mr. Carroll.
I think it should be the position, not necessarily the person.
Exactly, thank you. Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Rosemary Conley, 405 Franklin. If it's compared, we had asked for Collins Report's numbers, but if it's a comparative number to the highway, the highway under the Collins Report was underpaid, so we did not get that number back. So if you are comparing it towards that particular position, that position was underpaid. The Collins Report is a report that compares like communities and how they pay similar salaries, so...
Other questions on amending line 410? All right, then we'll move to a vote then on amending line 410 to read $99,371. And the amendment is successful. Line 410 is amended to read $99,371. Discussion on the amended line 410. All right, then we'll move to a vote then on 410 reading $99,371. And the line item is adopted at the amended amount.
Thank you.
Line 421, question on 421. Yes, sir.
Hi, Neil Gorman, Court Street. We purchase our water from Brockton General Area, and comes down, they treat it, originally comes from Silver Lake. So I have just a couple of questions as to how much, since we're purchasing so much, how much we're charging for the use of our pipes for the water to go into Brockton? And secondly, how much control do we have over the status of the service using the overflow of Stetson ponds and sources from Dyton in addition to the Silver Lake? Thank you.
Mr. Linum.
Our water is purchased from the city of Brockton. The pipes really have nothing to do with it. We simply pay on a gallonage basis. The challenge with this bill is trying to get Brockton to bill us in a reasonable period of time. We are still working on FY '18 bills because they haven't been received yet. But the service, you are correct, the water comes from Silver Lake, it's also merged with water from Aquaria, but we pay for the treatment of the water, and that's what our rate reflects, the cost of that water. So I hope that answers your question.
Any other comment on 421? All right, then let's move to vote on the Finance Committee's recommendation for 421. And 421 is adopted, and that concludes Article 2, I believe. And I have an urgent message that's just been handed to me. The Bruins have won, so they are moving on. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to authorize spending limits for fiscal year 2020 for the following revolving accounts approved under the town's bylaws or to take any other action relative thereto. Animal Control, $5,000. Council on Aging, $10,000. Library fines and fees, $20,000. Passport and photo fees, $3,000. Planning Board, $75,000. Police Department, $20,000. Recreation Department, $30,000. We have a motion and a second. A discussion of Article 3. No discussion, then we'll move to vote on Article 3 in a moment here. Okay? And Article 3 is adopted. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $7,500 to engage an expert to perform an assessment of future liabilities for OPEB, other post-employment benefits as required by GASB 45/75 Government Account Standards Bureau, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. There being no discussion, we'll vote now on Article 4. And Article 4 is adopted. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate outside the levy limit the sum of $451,316 to pay the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District debt payments, which that was authorized by Article 7 of the May 7, 2002 Annual Town Meeting and the May 18, 2002 Debt Exclusion Vote, or take any other action relative thereto. A motion and a second. Discussion? Discussion of Article 5. Yes, ma'am.
Can someone please explain Article 7, May 7 of 2002?
Mr. Linum.
It is a point of reference to note when the authorization for the debt was voted.
Any other questions on Article 5? All right, then let's move to a vote on Article 5. And Article 5 is adopted. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $7,352.20 from the Reserve for Appropriation Title V Loans Account to make fiscal year 2020 debt payments, with any balance remaining from this appropriation at a fiscal year-end to be returned to said account, or take any other action relative thereto. A motion and a second. Discussion of Article 6. There being no discussion, we'll move to now a vote on Article 6. Article 6 is adopted. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $41,050 from free cash and transfer $100,000 from Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Receipts Account to make a payment of $141,050 on debt payment authorized by Article 41 of the May 19, 1998 Annual Town Meeting, or take any other action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend Article 7 to change the appropriation source from free cash to raise and appropriate. That will put it inside the tax levy. A copy of that document is included in the packets at the end.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend Article 7 to change... Any discussion on the amendment? All right, then let's vote on amending Article 7. Okay, Article 7 is amended. Discussion on the amended article.
The purpose of this amendment is to utilize levy capacity and free up some of the free cash that we otherwise would be voting.
Any discussion of Article 7? All right, then let's vote on the amended Article 7. Article 7 is adopted as amended. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $687,025 in free cash to make interest and principal payment on debt authorized by Article 1 of the November 17, 2008 Special Town Meeting for the construction of a new police station and renovations to the fire station in Town Hall, or take any action relative thereto.
I move to amend Article 8 to change the funding source to read, to raise and appropriate $154,683 and transfer $532,432 from free cash. Same reason.
Discussion of the amendment. All right, let's vote on amending Article 8. And the article is amendment. Discussion of the amended article. All right, well, let's vote on the amended Article 8. I'm sorry?
John Gold, Rosen 238 South Avenue. Can you explain, what would happen if the debt exclusion is passed? Will you come back and reconsider this article?
Mr. Linum.
Yes, the intent of the town, hopefully, is on passing the debt exclusion, we will come back, we will revote, or we'll probably have to have a special within that meeting in order to reconsider previous votes from this meeting, and then move ahead with allocating funds based on our levy and free cash.
Other discussion of Article 8. All right, then let's move to vote on the amended Article 8. And Article Eight is adopted as amended. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer $29,664 from the Motor Vehicle Fine Account and to raise and appropriate $3,164.11, providing $32,828.11 to make the following payments: $14,655.69 for the second of three payments for one administrative vehicle; $13,772.42 for the third of three payments for one administrative vehicle; $4,400 for the lease of a Harley-Davidson motorcycle, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, sir.
Preston Franzen, 34 Aaron Street. I have a couple of questions about this. First of all, I was wondering, what is an administrative vehicle? And also, why a Harley-Davidson motorcycle? Why do we need one? And lastly, can we move the funds anywhere else, or do they have to be used for... For the police department, can be used to other services?
Chief Benton?
Scott Benton, 250 Alden Street. So the vehicles that we get, whether they're cruisers or unmarked cruisers, rotate through the fleet. Detectives use unmarked vehicles. We have three of those, so they're administrative, they're unmarked. Those are the administrative ones. We rotate them through based on services that they need and which vehicle is the oldest. The Harley-Davidson. We use the Harley-Davidson quite extensively. We belong to the SEMLEC group, which is... Gives us... We're into the SWAT... We have a SWAT team, search and rescue, motorcycle unit, peer counseling unit for police officers. There's a dive team, a bike team. There's a whole bunch of units in that. One of them is the motorcycle unit. And we have Lieutenant Conley, who is a member of that unit, actually. He's one of the officers who's in charge of it. So that's what we use the Harley for, and you will see the Harley used at parades and different events in town here. It's also used for escorts, for... In the line of duty deaths for police officers, firemen, and also participates in escorts. And I'm sorry, what was your other question?
If the funds could be moved elsewhere, they have to be used for police...
So the Motor Vehicle Fine Account, where this comes from, is essentially an account that was created back in the late 80s to avoid... In an attempt to avoid layoffs. It wasn't created to be a staple part of our budget, but it has been. So this is actually making lease payments on the vehicles that are used to patrol your streets based on the number of citations that we write. So that's where the money that comes from this is being actually used within the police budget. Otherwise, you would have to raise and appropriate that number to make the payments for it, so... Sure.
Any other questions first on Article Nine? Okay, go ahead, sir.
I believe we already have a motorcycle that we're using in town and that's already being used for these... The SWAT purposes and for the parades and the honorary bike rides, which I do appreciate and I acknowledge. I'd like to know why that bike is insufficient, why we should have a new lease. I'm sorry for not speaking clearly, I'm a little nervous. And why we would need a new lease for a bike that we might already have. Thank you.
Chief?
We only have one motorcycle and it's a yearly lease.
Any other questions on Article Nine? All right, let's move to a vote then of Article Nine. This requires a two-thirds vote to pass. And the article is adopted. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $42,110.51 from free cash to fund the third of four annual payments to the lease purchase of a 2017 Prynoth Bombardier Model SW45 Sidewalk Plow, or take any other action relative thereto. A motion and a second. Discussion? All right, this... We'll move to a vote then on Article Ten. Again, this also requires a two-thirds majority to pass. And Article Ten is adopted. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $8,300 from available cemetery funds to purchase a 2019 Ferris Lawn Mower, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All right, we'll then move to a vote on Article Eleven. Article Eleven is adopted. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $388,036 from available Chapter 90 funds for the purpose of resurfacing and/or installing surface treatments and line painting to streets on various town streets, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Discussion? Sir?
I'm Neil Gorman, Court Street. Every year, we want to keep our roads safe, clear, everything. So we keep renewing this budget item, making a special item for it rather than a regular yearly budget. But the problem seems to be that even though we have one of the key asphalt places in the region, even though we have a DPW that's fully funded, we still have problems with our roads. We have potholes that you stay there year after year after year, and that affects our emergency vehicles, our ambulances, our fire engines, our police vehicles. Our DPW vehicles are all driving over those potholes, getting damaged further. So I'm willing to fund this. I just want to have some assurance that the roads are actually going to get repaired. Thank you.
Mr. Lynam?
Chapter 70 is the... Sorry, Chapter 90 is the fund that the Commonwealth appropriates each year for all cities and towns. It's revenue from presumably collection of gas taxes that provide us with a... I'd have to call it a stipend more than anything else. The reason it's voted as an article is because it is a grant of money from the state. It is not a regular budget item. Unfortunately, with revenues where they are, we don't have additional money to commit to repairing roads right now. Again, part of the capital plan. But I'm sure Bruce can give you a little more information on that.
Mr. Martin?
Bruce Martin, 54 Park Cav Highway Superintendent. Just to add to what Frank said, these are funds that is given to each town in the state based on mileage of roads in each town, and ours is generally around $325,000 a year. I can assure you, we spend just about all that every year. I don't know if anybody drove down Buell Street today. We started that project today. That's last year's Chapter 90 money. There was some delay in designing of an intersection. Usually, we do it in the summer. So just to put it in perspective, that project is about $366,000 to do from Washington Street to West Street, including line painting, redesigning, redesigning intersection. July 1st, this money of voting will come good, and we plan on doing Essex Street over again, as far as we can go with the money. We have to save some money for painting lines. The lines wear out Whitman Center and a lot of the main roads, and we paint them every year. And that's usually around $25,000. The rest of it goes into doing the roads. Whatever we have left over rolls into the next year's roadwork, but it's usually not that much. We have to overestimate to make sure we don't run short on these projects.
Other questions on Article 12? Mr. Otina?
Marshall Otina, 100 Lazal Street. Are there any other proposed projects other than Essex and Buell at this time?
So we take it year by year. We did what they call a windshield survey of every street in town last year, and we made comprised a list of some of the most needed roads, and we try to take care of some side streets, but we... You know, I know there's a lot of side streets where people are going 20 miles an hour and they're in rough shape. We try to patch those. We really have to keep up with the streets where the speed limits are more like around 40, where if you were in a pothole, you could crash, you could do some really real damage. So we're looking at Essex Street for sure this year, which is, if you drive that, it's really rough. And then, you know, I hate to start naming streets, but we are looking at Pleasant Street and Winter Street as far as main roads for next year. Winter Street's a school zone, sidewalk's in rough shape. That project would probably include a sidewalk and a roadway.
Other questions on Article 12? Yes, ma'am.
Bruce, can you explain, is this... How this $388,000 is going to be impacted when all these new developments are going in and new roads? Does that include the installing surface treatments?
So when a new project is built, a subdivision, once it's accepted by the town to the town's specifications, that will go into the formula where the state rolls the money back through Chapter 90. Small subdivisions don't really add that much to the major amount, but once we accept them as a road, we are responsible to repair them. We hope to get 15, 20 years out of the new subdivision before even thinking about doing any kind of roadwork in there. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions on Article 12? All right, then let's proceed then to a vote on Article 12. And Article 12 is adopted. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $120,000 from the available water and sewer retained earnings to purchase and equip a 20,000-pound class mini excavator, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and second. Do we have discussion? All right, then there being none, we'll move to a vote then on Article 13. And Article 13 is adopted. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $10,500 from the available water and sewer retained earnings to repair the permanent melt generator at the Old Coach Sewer Pumping Station, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. Discussion? Sir?
Dennis Smith, 250 Stetson Street. I'm the current Water and Sewer Superintendent, and I'd like to amend this article to read, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $10,500 from available water and sewer retained earnings to repair the permanent melt generators at the Old Coach and Rowena Ave Sewer Pumping Stations, or take any action relative thereto.
All right, then we have a motion to amend Article 14 as read. Discussion of the amended article, of the amendment, rather. All right, then let's vote on amending Article 14. Okay, the amendment is adopted. Now discussion of the amended article. There being none, let's move to a vote on the amended Article 14. And Article 14 is adopted as amended. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $36,000 from available water and sewer retained earnings to purchase and install a permanent generator and associated costs for the Belcher Drive Sewer Pumping Station, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion made and second. Discussion of Article 15? There being none, we'll move to a vote now on Article 15. Article 15 is adopted. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $36,600 from available water and sewer retained earnings to update the Scotta Pump Station Monitoring System at the sewer pump stations, or take any other action relative thereto. Motion made and second. Discussion of Article 16? There being none, we will move to a vote then on Article 16. Article 16 is adopted. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $34,220 from available water and sewer retained earnings to repair various manholes belonging to the town of Whitman Sanitary Sewer System to eliminate groundwater infiltration into them, or take any action relative thereto. Motion made and second. Discussion of Article 17? There being none, we'll now move to a vote on 17. 17 is adopted. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $200,000 from available water and sewer retained earnings for repairs and improvements to the South Avenue Pump Station, or take any action relative thereto. Motion and second. Discussion of Article 18? All right, let's move to a vote then of Article 18. Article 18 is adopted. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $200,000 from available water and sewer retained earnings for repairs and improvements at the Auburn Street Pump Station, or take any action relative thereto. Motion and second. Discussion of Article 19? All right, then let's move to a vote on 19. And Article 19 is adopted. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $315,000 from available water and sewer retained earnings to replace the cast iron water main on Rayner Avenue, or take any action relative thereto. Motion moved and seconded. Discussion? Mr. Gorman?
Yes, I just wonder if there's been an impact study on this in regards to just simply changing a few pipes in Flint, Michigan to the brown water situation that happened in Situ a few years ago? Is this going to suddenly contaminate our entire water supply? Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Several years back, the town went through a replacement program, getting rid of all the cast iron that they possibly could. This was a small section from about Carlton Street to just before the Rotary that was left out. And it's usually good for one water break a year. And usually, when it happens, it's a disaster involving people's driveways and yards. And we'd like to get this last piece here replaced. It shouldn't... If anything, it'll improve the quality of the water on Rayner Ave. Does that answer your question?
Other discussion on Article 20? All right, then let's move to vote on Article 20. Article 20 is adopted. Article 20 is adopted. Article 21 is withdrawn. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to transfer $39,599.50 from the Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Receipts Account to the third of five lease purchase payments for 2016 ambulance is approved at the special town meeting on May 2, 2016, or take any action relative thereto. A motion and second, discussion? Okay, there being none, then, we'll vote to on Article 22, which does require a two-thirds majority to pass. And Article 22 is adopted. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $70,926.90 from the Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Receipts Account to pay the fifth of seven lease purchase payments of a pumping engine originally approved at the May 5, 2015 annual town meeting or take any action relative thereto. Motion made in second, a discussion of Article 23? Mr. Carroll?
You've got Article 24 on the board.
There we go, sir. Okay, so we're ready now to vote on Article 23, which does require a two-thirds majority as well. And Article 23 is adopted. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $42,000 from the Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Receipts Accounts for the purchase of personal protective equipment, PPE, firefighting gear for firefighters with any unspent funds to be returned to said account or take any action relative thereto. Motion made in second, a discussion of Article 24? All right, there being none, let's move then to a vote on Article 24. And Article 24 is adopted. Article 25 is withdrawn. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $85,000 from the Reserve for Appropriation Ambulance Receipts Account to provide initial funding for the upgrade and purchase of a new public safety radio equipment, which will complete the public safety radio upgrade, partially funded by a $200,000 state grant, with any unspent funds to be returned to said account or take any action relative thereto. A motion and second, discussion of 26? Mr. Gorman?
All right, Neil Gorman, Court Street. Just a question, didn't we fund a radio upgrade two years ago, about $65,000 for the police? Thank you.
Chief Penn?
That was used to purchase portables, and these portables will be used as part of this upgrade when we go to digital.
Other discussion of Article 26? All right, then, let's move to a vote then on Article 26. And Article 26 is adopted. Article 27 is withdrawn. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to amend Article 27, Section 2 of the Town Bylaw to read, "Section 2 License Fees: Examination for Seeing Eye Dogs Refunded Fees, effective July 1 of each year, the annual fee for every dog license, except as otherwise provided by law, shall be $15 unless a certificate of registered veterinarian who performed the operation that such dog has been neutered or has been spayed and has thereby been deprived of the power of propagation, has been shown to the town clerk, in which case the fee shall be $10. A certified copy of such certificate on file in the office of any city or town clerk within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts may be accepted as evidence that such an operation has been performed, if the town clerk is satisfied that certification by the veterinarian who neutered or spayed the dog cannot be attained, the town clerk may accept in lieu thereof a statement under the penalties of perjury by a veterinarian registered and practicing in the Commonwealth describing the dog and stating that he has examined such dog, and in his opinion, the dog is not capable of propagation by reason of neutering or spaying, until the veterinarian has examined the dog in question, license fee for the licensing period shall be at the rate of unneutered male or spayed female. When applying for a license, the applicant must also show proof of veterinarian certificate that the dog has been vaccinated against rabies within the last three years of the dog at six months of age or older, as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 145B. In addition to requirement that a dog shall be duly licensed as required by law, the owner of a dog which is not licensed on or before August 31 of any year shall be subject to a late fee, so-called, of $25. Said fee to be paid to the town clerk in addition to the license fee for all dogs licensed on or after August 31 of any year. The late fee must be paid before a license type will be issued. Every dog license under the provision of this bylaw shall wear a collar or harness to which shall be securely attached to proper and valid that license tag. In the event that any tag is lost, defaced, or destroyed, substitute tags shall be obtained by the owner or keeper from the town clerk at a cost of $3. The provision of this section shall not apply to institutions licensed under Chapter 49A of the General Laws, dispatch shops licensed under Section 39A of Chapter 129 of the General Laws, to any person operating a kennel or where otherwise provided by law." We have a motion? Thank you. Moved and seconded. Discussion? All right, there being none? I'm sorry.
Laura Howe, 185 School Street. My question is, why are these fees needed to be increased? I think Josh Kimball reached you for an answer, but I did not receive that because I think a lot of people are under the understanding that it goes to animals. And I realize your department is different, but none of this money goes to anything to do with animals, so I was just curious of the reason. And that's all.
Thank you, Laura. I appreciate that. I just want to let you know, I did a little bit of research as far as the dog licensing fees. They were, they were put into effect in April 29, 1987 for $5. It's been 32 years since we've increased these fees. Also, I looked at, and I will get to your things, I do have all that stuff. So I did look at the surrounding towns, and we are the lowest in surrounding towns for dog licensing. You know, I looked at Abington, Hanson, Halifax, East Bridgewater, Rockland, and Hanover, and they're all $10. So I just kind of use that as a base for what... So your question is, is it goes into the general fund? Which, yes, it does. However, the salaries for the animal control, your expense line, those types of things are in the general fund. And so this money maybe indirectly doesn't go to you, but right now, there's a lot of fees that have been increased in this town because we really haven't increased fees. Building Department hasn't, my office hasn't, in years. I mean, I, people come to me and they're amazed that we're still at $5 for a birth certificate. So I think with the town and the financial crisis that we're in right now, it's just the opportunity to do it. This is something, we can't just increase these fees. There are fees that have to go through a bylaw change per state law, and that's why it's here before the town. I mean, I have three dogs. This is not, it's, you know, it's going to hurt me, but I believe that it's something that needs to be increased. And I do believe that you have like a revolving account. I was thinking, you know, that was my email to Josh, maybe see if you can increase your revolving account. I know you have a gift account. I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm not, I'm on your side, and, but I do think it's time for a change. It's been 32 years since we've increased a fee.
And, and then you would understand this, that every year I have about 800 people that do not license their dogs at the fees already. So it's about $20,000, which is about what you're going to now get. Why don't we just get the people to pay the fees that are now?
Amen. And actually, I have those numbers too.
If they're not going to pay $5 and $10, how do we expect them to pay 10 and 15?
Well, that's not my job. I'm the licensing authority, so I just collect the licenses. I don't go after the people who don't pay. And I will read the numbers back to you. In 2012, we had 687 unlicensed dogs. In 2013, well, I know you know, but the people don't know. In 2013, we had 85 unlicensed dogs. In 2014, we had 374 unlicensed dogs. 2015, we had 245. 2016, we have 232. 2017, we had 242. And 2018, which is what we're writing now, we have 810.
Yes, and that is when people were calling. So maybe we could just explain to the people, you know, where that money goes and let them vote on it.
Oh, absolutely. I believe people need to vote on it, but you asked me a few questions, so I answered them.
I didn't get clarification from Josh, so I had just wondered what that was. But I just find it hard when people aren't willing to pay the smaller fees to then expect them to pay the larger ones.
I'm just going with surrounding towns.
And maybe the town vote will help that.
Ms. Connolly?
Thank you. Ms. Rosemary Connolly, 405 Franklin Street. Hi. Before you, one of the recommendations before you consider Proposition 2 and 1/2, because you want to make sure that your fees are in order. So you go back and make sure that your fees are in line with local towns and other things. And one of the things we ask for all department heads to do is to look at their fees and see if they're in line. I believe that was done by Dawn, and not only Dawn, the Building Department and other departments, to make sure that they were in line. Before we ask people to consider a Proposition 2 and 1/2, it's the financially responsible thing to do. I think Frank can probably speak to other aspects of that, too.
Mr. Lightman?
I just want to remind you, when we do our levy limit calculation, what goes into that calculation is all the taxes we assess. That would include real and personal property, and we do local receipts, which would include the motor vehicle excise tax, and local license fees. That's all part of the levy limit. If we're going to increase our levy limit, we should start on the basics, and the basics are local initiatives. The funds that we raise by increasing this fee, and I'll put aside the argument of whether or not we're collecting it, are intended to fund operations, and among those operations are animal control and all the other departments. So this is a direct correlation to that operation. Sir?
Yeah, Josh Gray, 100 Whiting Ave. I just have one statement to make first. During this conversation about dog licenses and earlier in salary compensations, we were talking about surrounding towns and making sure that we're in line with surrounding towns, with salaries and dog licenses, but we're not having that same conversation when it comes to our schools. And I think that that's a really important part of this conversation. The second to that is in terms of the dog license specifically, just because we can charge more, just because you can make a bigger fee, doesn't mean you should. Just because it's, we, it hasn't changed in five years, the services aren't changing, right? My dog still lives at the same house that he's lived at when he was $5. I don't know why he now needs to be $10. You know, he still can't propagate, so he should still be $5. So I, you know, I'm not in favor of raising fees for that reason.
Ms. Connolly?
Ms. Connolly, 405 Franklin Street. Well, I appreciate that. That is true that the services change. It was, it's a process you do before you consider an override. You make sure that, because there's a reason you go into an override. You're not bringing in enough revenue. So you make sure that all your revenue sources are in line or appropriate before you take those next steps. That's, that's why, and I'm sorry if, you know, the services haven't changed, but that's how you, you keep track of these things, and you make sure you do things in order.
Other discussion, Article 28? Mr. Gorman? We have a, we have a motion to move the question, so we'll take a vote now on whether we should end debate and move to a vote.
We made a motion to do all of these electronically, so we have to do them electronically.
Just give the clerk a second here to set this up. Ready? Okay, and now we can vote on a motion to end debate and move the question. The motion is adopted. We now vote on Article 28 itself. You ready? Okay. And Article 28 is adopted. Article 29?
Mr. Moderator, point of information, please.
Point of information?
Up in the balcony, Michael Roderick, 52 Alden Street. Would it be, would it be in order to reconsider the use of electronic voting devices?
At this point, we have one article remaining tonight. But that is, that is certainly a topic that the town meeting can, can certainly reconsider.
I'll withdraw the consideration.
Article 29, to see if the Town of Whitman will approve the amended Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Regional Agreement dated June 6, 2018, which is on file in the town clerk's office, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second discussion of 29? Mr. Goldrosen?
Sean Goldrosen, 238 South Avenue. Can we have the Finance Committee's recommendation on this? And can you tell us if there's any financial effects on the town?
Mr. Anderson?
I can address the first part of your question, and I'll defer the second to Frank. This Article 29 was not recommended by the Finance Committee. A vote of 1, 4, with 2 abstaining. 1, 4, 2 was the vote.
Mr. Lightman?
There has been significant discussion with respect to how funds are allocated within the Chapter 70 receipts that come in for Whitman and Hanson. There are some officials that feel that there is an inequity in how that money is apportioned. I think it does require us to revisit the question on the contract, and what I'd like to do at this point is make a motion to pass over this article.
We have a motion to pass over and a second discussion. Any discussion of passing over Article 29? Give the clerk a second here to set this up. Ready? Yeah? Okay, we're ready to vote on passing over Article 29. Should we re-vote that? All right, let's, let's re-vote that. There's no, nothing's been announced here, so we'll re-vote Article... Are we ready to vote? Okay. Okay. And Article 29 is passed over. Mr. Linum?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting to June 17 at 7:30 PM.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to June 17 at 7:30 PM. A discussion. All right, then, we'll vote on adjourning. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. This was a long meeting, and it's been a tough year, but thank you very much for the part that you're playing in this.